Camera that's looking at you and that's not working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's looking at you, yeah, that one's not swiveled. Well, at a minimum, we can record and people can hear.
And that's what I did, I recorded the whole thing.
But usually this.
The camera usually comes up automatically.
Yep, usually.
So I've had problems like this at work and call the IT guy and he just tells me to unplug from the wall.
Yeah, it's my next.
That's true.
Why not?
You know what we need is more relatives. Oh, there it goes, fix it.
Zach, you. You said. Plug it back in.
You should have been recording that when you.
There goes the Gizmo on again. The Gizmo was off for a while as well. So we didn't get.
No, it was recording, it just wasn't.
It was just.
I pizzled with his face.
I got it on my computer, that's why I went out in the hallway to see if I could hear it and I could, so.
Thank you.
And.
Oh goodness.
Still focusing on me.
Did you, is the little, the little cone on the desktop is the camera, right? Looks like a traffic cone on the bottom left. If you minimize WebEx.
Oh, there we go. Fixed it. No, I, that wasn't, yes, but, yes.
So I don't care if it was me. Thank you, good job.
Alright, yeah, I, yeah, sorry everyone.
You didn't want to be at the front and center of everyone.
No, thank you.
Right now?
Did we fix that?
It's now focusing on you, it's recording, I did lose the people that work on. There were only like three or four.
But you still. Try again.
I, they heard me the whole time.
Yeah, so maybe they'll try again a little bit, yeah.
As soon as we can.
Yeah, it will be open with the same length so they'll be able to run right back up. And it will be recorded so they could pick it up where they left it.
I wonder which two of those were.
Not two.
There will actually, right there.
Yeah, that's, I think so.
I'm just gonna get the news.
We were on, so twenty-two thirteen is the curriculum section. That's page six.
Okey dokey. Okay, curriculum development.
Right, so I'll, Mrs. Withy, you keep going, I can pick you up from here. So for curriculum development, the, one of the.
We can probably leave that open. No, they're not vacuuming, so.
One of the items that we make sure to add that we come to you and you graciously approve every year is for the Nellens Conference, for a team of middle school staff to go to the Nellens Conference. So that's part of what is in that curriculum line. As well as like summer curriculum work above is separate.
Yeah.
In-service training is to bring someone in for, like CPAR and first aid training. That's offered to all staff and lots of people take advantage of that, which is great. Then there's just mileage reimbursement, staff development books for. Stayed the same. What was improvement of instruction? Oh no, that's the subtotal, sorry.
Yeah.
Then we move into library and media services. So library supplies, we stuck with the same amount of nine fifty. Same amount for periodicals. And we did bump up the records materials up five hundred dollars, so it's sixty-five hundred.
So just for everyone, the lines that say F-U-N-C, like function, those are the subtotal lines and we're ignoring those for now.
Yeah.
Because they will show huge deficit or huge, I don't know.
Like we saved a ton of money, but we really didn't because all the lines always won't go yet, correct?
We saved. Correct. We haven't filled them in yet because we don't know the information yet.
Correct.
Okay. So just ignore the huge negative numbers.
And then the next little section is AV materials and repairs. There's just two fifty, two hundred, two hundred. So we level funded those sections. Are you ready to take over? I don't want to steal your, your fun.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I can get in sometimes.
Let me know when you want me to stop.
Yep.
Page eight is blank. Page nine. We've got extra assignment stipends for forty-five hundred dollars or forty-eight, my contacts are tired. And then that includes, something that we added and Mrs. Withy talked to the other principals in the area. We didn't have any funding in for the teachers that go on overnight field trips. I think that very generously give up their time for days. So we're adding a stipend for the staff that go on overnight field trips. Is it one or two hundred?
Oh, one hundred.
One hundred and nine?
I think so, yeah.
So we just, for our six, eight trips.
And then the actual on that line is like twenty thousand.
Do we know what that was?
Yes, that was the double bus run last year.
Oh, to pay our staff to be after school off of the cafeteria full of kids.
God, okay.
Had to pay them somewhere. And it was an extra assignment for them, so, yeah.
Is it possible to add that as a note for the MBC?
Sure.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
Yes.
It's gonna flex.
Yeah, yeah. And the first year we had the double bus runs, we were able to, Mrs. Withy put it in the Esser grant, so we were able to cover it then, but then the second year we didn't have that, same funding available.
But like, feasibly, we could incur these costs again if next year we don't have buses.
We could, but we're not.
But that almost should be.
Budget.
We're finger crossing on that and we did save in the transportation line, so that was offset, it's just.
I was gonna say, it's almost too bad we couldn't put that in the transportation line, yes.
Yeah, we can't, it's not transportation.
But that's, that's where the cost really should have been hurt.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Got it, okay. Criminal records check. We leveled at two thousand dollars, so as you know, every staff member that comes in, we're required to do background checks and fingerprints.
And if you, how do you let people in from the lobby? Because it's not, it says, I tried joining and it says we've lost the host. We let the host know you're here.
This has happened a couple of times, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I don't know if I can fix it, but.
So here is where the meeting is in progress.
Yep.
And then on here, we let the host know you're here.
Kendra?
Yeah.
I think we're obligated to open the floor to budget committee members.
Just to admit people from the lobby.
That's weird that they're in the lobby because the meeting is not logged. Usually they go over the lobby, we don't put them there.
Comments on this.
Yeah.
And there's nobody showing in the lobby.
Shows where his MBC at.
I'm there.
Yeah, but you don't show.
The only way you could do it is to write.
We should also probably give them a copy of this.
The MBC?
Yeah.
We gave them a draft a number of years ago.
I think the best we're gonna be able to do is record this.
We post them, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
They want to see it, it's online.
So we're gonna keep the recording going, so if anyone contacts you, just let them know. To pick, go to the recording when it's posted and they'll be able to see the rest, sorry. Alright.
Professional dues, I think we're.
Criminal records, we did outside tech support. For a thousand dollars is where we're at. Are you jumping back in or you want to keep going?
I can, yeah.
So that was the bottom of page nine.
So top of page ten, postage.
Yep.
As you can see in our actuals, it was closer to twenty-five hundred. Travel conferences, that's a contractual line. Office supplies and professional books.
Came pretty close about last year.
Just all of that, yeah. And the office furniture, last year we, we had a dollar, so we weren't able to purchase anything, but tried to always, I always try to put, I ordered back in as well as replacement furniture.
So this is office when it comes to classroom.
That's in the office.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Commencement is always a line that we're trying to increase. We always come and ask for money for, out of surplus.
And if we get the default, just so that you're aware of that, that's why we have to keep coming back, because if we get the default budget, we don't get that money.
That's like we had last year where people were upset because they weren't gonna get gowns, cats and gowns, right?
Yeah, so that's, so this is what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if the, if we get the default again and then we come back again and ask for extra money for that line.
Custodian mileage, I know he does use that line, so I don't know if our actuals, I don't know why there's nothing in the actuals, but he does use that line. Cleaning supplies, he's been able to maintain twenty-five thousand for a couple of years now. In page eleven, I have, you see the, Chris is requesting some new equipment. Seven thousand dollars, which is the K-O-N-B-I, K-O-N-B, is that how you say that? Kombi water pump and tank.
Yeah.
For the athletic field and for campus watering.
I'm not sure exactly what that is, but.
So there was, I know there was talk about sprinkler system and.
Must be able to pump water up to the. This is. Take in water, I think.
Yeah, the fields and the school grounds.
Outside my area, expertise.
I'll talk to him. I'll talk to him.
Yeah, that would be great, so you can understand.
Because if he's pushing it from down here, down in the parking lot, he's gonna need a lot of pump to push it up that hill.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could, that would be great.
Okay.
Thanks.
The equipment, new furnishing fixtures, again, you know, we started getting about a thousand dollars in to replace classroom carpets or things that he needs to replace. The equipment replacement for four thousand dollars is to replace the roof exhaust fans. Replacement furniture and fixtures, we have a thousand in there. He wants, Chris would like to begin. The replacement of the Cove base molding, we've done, we've done a lot of that around the school, but. That was his note that I asked, I, that I had asked him and that's what he said. He really put like twelve thousand dollars in that line. So maintenance supplies, as you can see, it's bumped up to seventeen. The appendix shows the details of that. Grounds and maintenance is up to fifty-five. That's in the appendix for details, to fulfill that contract.
Is that because it's a contractor? And if you, if you would, since some of these are specific to Chris, if you have questions and you want to email them to me, we can get answers for you by the next meeting.
Yeah, so you will have time, obviously, to ask more questions, so you'll be able to take this, digest it, think about it and then come back with plenty of questions.
As you can see, the, I'm sure can speak to, so that's seven hundred and twenty-two thousand in under contracted services. Yes.
That will come back in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
Because of the trust fund?
Mm-hmm.
So this would, this would be things like replacing the roof.
Yeah.
Something that's in.
Okay.
And then the next line is all the way down to the athletic trips. Twenty-seven, twenty-zero, zero-one, twenty-seven, twenty-four. We've not been able to, we've done for a couple of years now, we've not been able to provide transportation for our athletic trips. Schools, most school, a lot of schools in the area can't either. This is the first year that we've seen buses bringing kids to some of the sports events.
Yeah, so is that a busing issue or a funding issue?
Yes, it's a busing issue. Mm-hmm. We did, they're starting with drivers to do that.
Gotcha.
But a couple of other towns have been able to start doing that, so we're hopeful that we will be able to.
Do you mean, do you mean by that like a soccer team has a waking?
Yeah, go get our ten or.
So parents are driving, right?
Parents are driving, yeah. The field trips, we bumped up to seventy-seven hundred. We, there's definitely been an increase in field trip transportation this year. On average, about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per trip, so. And then we go on to page, I think I'm done, page thirteen. And fourteen are.
Yep.
All, we're hard done.
And then, so the appendices. So we had a question on the appendix A with the co-curricular and athletic budget. So like, for instance, you have two boys soccer teams, two girls, but you don't always have two teams. This is just, you put this in in case.
In case, yeah.
Okay. Alright.
And oftentimes in soccer and basketball, we do have a B team.
Yeah.
We usually join them. One of the, one of the, you always have a B team or the girls.
The next document, Amber did a year-end summary for you of where we ended. So that you can see like what the budget was in the funds and what the difference was from what we had in the budget. And sometimes there are big differences in certain lines because of the default. And then she put a little description of what the fund balance is and what it means. She just did that for one board and thought everybody might like it. That's a good explanation. And that's it for your packet for right now, so when she's here, you'll get the rest of the numbers and she'll go through all of those. Yes.
Worth pointing out and just reiterating what Barrett Christina said there a minute ago. And I don't know if this was just before I came in four minutes late, sorry about that. But this is to the new people, this is our budget, we're the ones, the board is making the budget. This is presented to us every year as a starting point. And it's obviously well-founded on well-documented and rational and a lot of good stuff. It is our budget, when we decide to move it to the MBC, that means we make changes if we want to, but it is, we are deciding to do this even though we're starting with this document from the administration. And then we make changes if we want to.
Thank you.
And then we defend that deliberative section.
Vigorously.
What we did. Don't forget that much.
On the other end, on the not of the front, yeah.
Vigorously.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would encourage, like, really looking at this and making sure that you understand increases, decreases, because, you know, we all need to be accountable for the budget.
And I've done one-on-one sessions with new board members before, honestly, if you want to sit and go through a budget so you really understand what's in the document, I'm happy to do that.
Or if you want to be on the MBC.
You're welcome to at any MBC meetings, they are open, public meetings. So I know, like, these are often, like, finalized, like, the day of the board meeting, but I, it would be helpful if, like, I would love to have this, like, a day in advance, if that's ever possible.
I try every year to get it in advance. It's only because there are five towns getting rid of it now, so sometimes unfortunately it's down to the wire.
That's fine.
But Amber does make every attempt to get it early and that's always our plan.
Maybe I will just email and say.
That would be.
As possible. And I would be happy to, like, because I'm a big, like, paper lady, like, I don't like to look at things on the computer.
I tell me all the time.
What? I never bring my laptop. No, I like this, I like highlighting, I like notes.
Yeah, that's hard, yeah.
Um, but if they are available, like, a day in advance, I'd be happy to drive to the SAU office and pick them up for you.
Yeah, we could get them here.
We have a printer here.
Wow, I know, they're fancy, they're like a booklet, I don't know, it seems complicated.
Right, Amber, she likes making her booklets.
Right, like, it seems complicated, I can't do that, so. Either way, I'm just saying, happy to.
Yes.
Help so that people have it in advance if they want to make notes or whatever, if it's possible.
The numbers that she puts in are the big ones and sometimes it's down to the wire trying to get those numbers. A lot of, a lot goes into it. Once the budgets are built and you want to make changes, that's fast, but it's the initial building of it that.
We also, so as everybody knows, we sent an email to the MBC outlining our budget.
Anticipated dates.
Anticipated dates and stuff. And we, I also said that we would allow any MBC members who came to our meetings an opportunity to ask questions after we review the budget. So we have a member of the municipal budget committee here.
Do you happen to have a copy of what you have for that MBC member?
We do not. We do not, but it's gonna be.
Would that be possible to plan for that in the future?
It's gonna be posted online, yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
I mean, well, we certainly appreciate the invitation and the offer, but without having what you all have.
Yep.
Sort of.
Yeah, we can, in the future, we can, sure. And, and we'll have it posted by tomorrow.
By tomorrow?
This one.
Okay.
Yes. If it's not already there, she might have already put it up, but yes.
But I think what Errol's.
I can make a handout next time.
Yeah, an effort to participate.
Right.
Needs to have the stop.
That's right, thank you, Ramon.
So, do you know if it's just gonna be you or if we're anticipating two people? I'm just trying to figure out how many copies we should make.
I think the hope was two, Maureen, I think, is just out of the country right now. So I think Maureen pointed and I had indicated we would.
That's my understanding.
Be here.
So I'll bring two.
That's for sure.
I'll bring.
Or maybe even, we have to support Chair's request for a day in advance.
If I get it and I get an extra one, I'll put it in your mailbox. If possible, not always possible, it's not.
Drive up to.
There are some, well, there are some weeks that Amber has three of these in one, so it's just not, yes.
We do our best. Okay, anything else related to the budget for tonight? This is obviously not the only night we're talking about budget. We have lots of budget talks coming and then following meetings, so do not need to solve all of our budget woes today. Okay, so we will move on to Dale invoices.
Move the first invoice for fourteen thousand nine seventy-two.
Second.
Zach, Nate, do you need the number?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Is this just the cost of what it was for the bus to transport kids in September?
Yes.
Okay, for high school, for high school.
Yeah, and this, this is probably newer, if I may, for you and Danielle to see, but this, this started a year ago when we were really trying to just keep tabs and a thumb on top of Dale because of the way they were, during COVID and everything else.
Okay.
It may be redundant at this point and it may not be necessary. But because they've.
Oh, so this is not, you don't.
Oh, no, your bills go into the manifest process.
I was gonna say, why is this special?
But they were called out because we had so many buses, like, today we had five, tomorrow we had six, today we had a double run.
So we were really, I think we're auditing it as a board.
So I was checking to make sure we were billed, getting billed for the runs that we got.
But I think now they've cleaned it up to the point where it's consistent enough where I don't think we need to approve.
We'll put it in the manifest process without.
At the discretion of everybody else, but.
I would be very happy to do that. I did wonder why we.
These were specifically.
Because, yes.
We were angry.
Got it, okay, because I was like, I do review the manifests and approve those too.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So just out of curiosity then, if that's something that we do, is not always viewed these every month, is there an alert system then if it seems to go awry?
Yeah, someone, so we, Nate and I both review the manifest and sign the manifest.
Yeah.
So it comes to us and we, it touches many hands before it even goes to you guys.
But this started because we had five buses and then there was a bus missing and then we were checking to make sure we weren't getting billed for a bus and there was days we got billed for a partial bus. And part of it was we didn't like the formula that they were using for billing partial buses. And that became a, a point of discussion during one of our conversations with them. That we remedied to our satisfaction.
But you feel everything's under control now, so.
At this point, they, they certainly seem to have gotten it all sorted out and they have the ability to maintain and satisfy the contract.
I think it's, it's been months and months we haven't, there hasn't been any.
It's, it's been.
I have seen one.
Correct. I haven't seen one since, well, honestly, since we started doing this.
Yeah.
There hasn't been one.
It's really nice and clean now, I think.
And there haven't been any bus issues this year, like.
What do you mean by issues?
Like, they have.
Just stock talk.
They have had buses, I mean, I haven't heard of anything.
We don't have double runs, which is.
Right, okay.
So, so.
But in large part, thanks to your community, because there's a lot of parents dropping off when we put the call out to.
Right.
I think it's, because they enjoy the new access route around the building.
Someone did say.
The dancing that's provided some of that.
Someone said that drop off is a well-oiled machine.
Is it?
They said that, it's not correct.
It's good, it's because we have teachers in costumes.
Yes.
So do you need a motion to?
Well, you have.
We need to approve these ones.
Okay.
Because they're here.
You're right, okay. So, all in favor of the first, approving the first invoice, fourteen thousand nine seventy-two?
Alright.
Aye.
I'll move the second invoice for thirty-four, thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five?
That's what I said, yes.
Second.
Zach and Nate, any discussion?
That is what I said, right?
I don't know what you said.
I said thirty-four, eighty, thirty-five, just to clarify.
You're good, you're good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now do you need a motion?
Let's put it back to the regular process, it was only brought to you at your request.
Not my request.
No, I mean, you are, the collective, you are.
Yeah, that was when, that happened before I started.
That was before you.
November, but, so I thought that was normal, okay. So, we don't have another public comment session, but I feel like we should offer one per our standard process before we go into non-public. I should have noticed this one during the agenda review, but I did not.
You know what we did, we changed the agenda up when we were doing work sessions, but then they kind of morph into work and business, so I think it's just good.
Yeah, so I'm gonna add in another public comment session now. So if there are any public comments, we will hear them.
It's a shoot Pleasant Hill Road. Not to add something more to your plate, but something to be thinking about. I was thrilled when Concord came and we accounted for our students, that it doesn't seem to be that we're losing twenty students from when they leave Deerfield to when they go to Concord. We found out some go to other schools. We also found out that somehow the way Concord has to present them or whatever. But if it, if in the future we're going to be going to more schools, I really wish there was a way that we knew how many kids start at Concord, how many kids start at Cove Brown, Pembroke, I know kids have gone to Raymond in the past. Not by name, not by name, I know we can't do that, but when they do the eighth grade class, like even in the town report or something, so that we know where kids start. But I also, as a school board, hope that maybe that will be something that we can keep track of so that we don't, I mean, that really bothered me when it was presented that it looked like we lost nineteen kids in a year. I had a little bit more information that I could go to knowing kids and I could say, oh, well, I knew these five went to Cove Brown and I knew this one moved out of town or this one, this. So I was able to bring that number down myself when I played with it, but it was still nice to hear that we hadn't lost those kids, but I think that's a good thing for the public to know.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I think so, right?
Well, thank you, Harold.
You can definitely go ahead.
Harold Rhodes, Church Street, appearing not as an MBC member. But something the prior speaker said triggered me, the idea that you all were thinking about sort of celebrating the student achievements and so forth, perhaps even to be put in a publication. And so if that's happening, I would encourage that. We do have a deadline coming up, we have four every year. This deadline is November fifteenth. So if you want to put in things about achievements of, you know, the DCS community, be happy to highlight it.
Great, thank you.
Bill, quick, Bobby Anne from Brown Road. There's been a lot of issues with the recording, I know you know that, it didn't have this many issues before when you guys had the other system, so I don't know if we can switch back to the other, I don't know, with Zoom or what, but it's constant, like, every single meeting you have, there's people messaging that I'm like, I don't know what to do with it. So that, and then, a lot of people, it's hard because you say you don't have to do anything with the emails, you just put it in the meeting minutes, but then people feel like you don't even, you might read it, but they feel like you don't acknowledge it. So if you're saying, we don't have to do anything with it, they have to show up to the meeting, but at the meeting you also don't talk to them, it's kind, it's kind of hard, like, you're hitting a brick wall. So I know it's your job and you got elected into a position, but like everybody, well, like, some people have. I know it's your job and you got elected into position, but like everybody, well, like some people have said, the community did vote for something in March. And when, when the community feels like they voted for something, but it's not really being heard the way it was voted for, just be mindful that. Even though you were elected and even though it's your job and, and you have a really hard job, that. You can't ignore the community who elected you, and, does that make sense?
Anyway, um, just, thank you for your time. Thank you. Anyone else? Okey dokey, so I'm gonna make a motion that we go into non-public session pursuant to NHRS A ninety-one dash A, colon, three, section two, small letters K and C. Aye. Aye.
Yes.